All right, Paul should be here in a couple of minutes. So, just so everybody know, the meeting is being recorded. The meeting is being recorded. Make sure I do it right. And, all right, let's go ahead and call to order our work session for September 5th. We have two items, and only two items on the agenda tonight. I'm going to be passing around the agenda for everybody to sign that you are here. But, all council members are present. Obviously, I am present. So, what we're gonna do is move right into the lighting replacement along Bay Avenue. The lighting on Bay Avenue are the lights that are inside the flower beds. Right now, they have zero structure or foundation to them. They are sitting on, not pressure-treated, but composite decking. The actual body of the product is no longer around, so we can't fix anything. There's exposed wires. They need some love. So, we have a grant for $50,000. We put $50,000 into the capital for this year to go towards it. We will need to do an RFP. So, what we submitted to council were two samples that you can pass around and look. The base is the same on both. It is able to hold a flag, and there will be outlets to plug in and so forth like that. But, we've met with a couple, we spoke to a couple individuals. We're hoping we can squeeze them into that hundred.
Is that just for the materials?
That's just material. The labor is the same no matter what, but the material is different based on the lights.
So, I'm just curious why, like, we replaced the lights on the pier not too long ago. So, since then, we had an opportunity to make them match.
We, it will be, well, the light, the way the light works, it won't work. But also, we looked at the lights that we redid on Chesapeake, and it is twice the dollar amount to replace them along Chesapeake Avenue. So, what we came up with, with the lighting company, was two alternatives. Obviously, there's one I think is the right one, the down draft one, or the downlight one. But that's the reason why we could not go with either one on the pier or on Chesapeake Avenue. Or Bay Avenue, Chesapeake Avenue.
Yeah, one of the pillars, which are more agreeable than the other.
I know, we don't, I mean, we're not that far off. I just would hope, I mean, you raise a good point, Mickey. I don't want to go cheap and then have like rust and like, I mean, it's gonna hold. It wants something that's gonna hold up to marine elements.
We met with the lighting company a couple times, with the installer, A installer. Obviously, having to be RFP to discuss the issues that we're having now. We laid it out, and this is what was given to us. We still have to do an RFP to go out, to find the best contractor. Things have changed somewhat in prices, supposedly due to tariffs. So, we are fighting that, and I really don't know what the price is gonna be when it comes in. I really don't.
What, the actual lights?
We have an estimate that you have in your package.
Yeah.
That we gave everybody.
Right.
Right, so.
But you're saying that you don't know the price?
We don't know yet. Once we run the RFP out, you know, with a lot of the trade wars going on and tariffs going on, it has affected the cost, I'm sure. We don't know that until we get the RFPs back from whomever bid on it. But, the base is here, which is very similar to what we have now. The base that is on the light now is discontinued. We can't even fix it when that cover comes off and all the wires expose.
And that's the five plus base.
Yes. And, there is no concrete under those lights now. They are freestanding. So, what we're gonna do is put tubes underneath, into the ground, under each one. For the concrete, they will be mounted to concrete. They won't be able to fall over like they can now. I can't tell you how many times we have moved them back up, fixed them over the time.
All right, we're just talking about the price of the products right now.
The actual heads of, the actual.
Yeah, the base is the same.
The base is the same on both.
So, you guys went back, you did look at the pricing for that, what we did on the pier. Are these colors, are they, are they, what was the finish, Mickey? I'm sure you remember.
These will be.
The ones on the pier. Yeah, it's powder coated.
These are powder coated black.
Yeah.
Similar to what we have now along Bay.
Like, once a pier, like, we're looking at oil drums.
Right.
That are supplies, are the only options.
Well, based on price, we can do anything that our checkbook can handle. Our problem is, is that what we learned quickly is that the prices went up dramatically every time you change one item. And, right now, we have $50,000 in the grant. If we awarded one right now, we will be upside down, $25,000 we would have to come up with. That means the cost is more than $50,000 that we put in the capital. But our goal is, is that once we select, we send it out to RFP, that we can have enough people to submit theirs. The problem is, is what we find in most lighting, there's not like 15 different manufacturers. So, really, what it is, is, I would look at it, is if they have a better buying percentage from that person, or they can buy them, they buy them larger bulk, or their profit margins are a little less.
So, with these, are we looking at light the street, like the four block, like the white hat?
Both.
Okay, just because different lights will do different things. Like, up in Pennsylvania, they have big main streets in the town, on poles, tall. And there's top lights, like, road, that go lower down off the side. Smaller light, that's strictly just like the sidewalk next to it.
So, I know, are we talking about the one, the double sided one?
Well, this one. That's why I was asking, on what we're trying to light.
Because there's a couple different designs here.
Well, what it is, is double or single head.
But I'm sure the price is different.
Yep. Let's go to the numbers. Trying to get the right price here. You can see all this stuff. You have those codes on your, on four docks, right?
Yeah, just the parking, the noise.
One is, what are the two numbers, 67 and what was the other quote? 72 is the downlights, the 67 is the, is that 67? No, no, I, yeah. Not much. It is.
You wanted a motion?
Well, really what we need to decide is, well, we can start with this. These are two, what we came up with through staff, meeting with lighting companies. Are we accepting one of those two? The vote is to move forward an RFP on one of the two. If we don't have an agreement of that, then obviously, then we're gonna have to go back to the drawings. So, really, what my, what I need tonight is a vote and approval of going for an RFP.
I need that you go for an RFP, and you went on one of those?
Yes.
So, we're voting for holding on the style.
Say how far you move, that's the conversation.
That's fine.
So, right now, we have 22A. So, this is 22A, which has two heads for one head. Okay. Then there's 23B, which is a single head.
Yes.
Apples? That should be a down. So, physically, the words, they can go shoot like down, just you have the two arms or the hopper.
The one with the two heads, the numbers that we have here, that you have, the two different prices, 172, 170, I apologize, I've gone through this so many times. That can be adjusted down the road to add a second hit. That light right now, if you go open it up, will. Yes.
Is rated for one arm?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if we were to go back, would we have that arm focused over the street?
Yes. And then, if you look at the size of the light. So, basically, what our goal tonight is to decide if we want to send up, start an RFP for one of these two lights.
So, I think I missed something in the conversation about where we're actually gonna be using.
Bay Avenue. The flower beds.
Yeah, all lights in Flower Bets.
Isn't that determining what we want one lamp, what we want dual lamps?
Well, and that's why I was asking, on, do we want a light the street? Do we want a light both, or one or the other? And, again, if we, the one that has the option for double arm, just make sure that the whole, we get the one that has the double arm option.
You will.
And that way, we can break up. So, it's just one of, it's when you order parts, it's, you have an issue.
How much would it cost to get a double, double one now?
Well, right now, what we have is a price for a single one. Because of, the single one, right now, the rough quote we have is what you see, is $72,000.
I'd like to know what it is.
What's that?
I'd like to know what the double is.
We can, I can give you that information, but right now, what we have is the single. Right.
Do we have, do we have any, have any, sure, like, with all the lights, where all the lights are?
I'm sure we have one, but I don't have one today.
What I'm thinking is, I'd be okay with a single arm for the streets, but wherever there's a street end and an intersection, if there's a ramp post there, I could see having a double. Certain ones start out with a double arm, just 'cause it's at the head of the street. And now, we change what we put out for bid.
We can adjust a bit any way you want to. Really, what, we can submit for either or.
I think that we have to be very clear on the spec requirements. Do we want one lamp, or we want two lamps? I mean, it's, that's just where I am on it. If we go on, I'm looking at this map, I can't tell if it can be modified later on to add the second lamp.
It can.
Well, then, that makes a difference.
So, really, what the goal is today is, is do we want to send out an RFP for one of these two lights? If not, if we do, great. We can write into the RFP what we want, what we're asking for. And then, so when people bid on it, or companies bid on it, they will bid based off of what we want. Basically, what the goal is today is just to see, do we want to send out an RFP for one of these two lights?
I wish we had a, I wish we had a quote on the listing, I mean, to know what that number is. Would we want to do RFP, more or less, put it out, saying, we like this style. What can you offer us in that style, and how can we use this brand? Because they may have access to the product, that we could. And maybe we should sort of be seeing one, if we already have a, you know, cheaper rate.
I can't repair those.
No, the ones that are on the pier.
The ones, the ones along Chesapeake would be a hundred grand. The ones that we copied Chesapeake.
And the ones in Bay, the ones in Bay with our Sternberg, which is expensive.
The ones on the pier are gonna be, more than this. We can get that number, but it's gonna be.
I'm curious.
That's fine.
So, let's say we approve to go out with this RFP for one or the other. That's all we're doing tonight, say, yes, we're here to approve people on an RFP.
That's it.
Can you then go back to the staff and do some more homework, and go back and say, hey?
We write the RFP up with the guidelines that we want. We send it out. We go after lighting companies, electrical companies and so forth, and see if they would like to bid on this project.
So, we still need to know tonight if we're going after one arm or two lamp?
We can, but we can put options in there in RFP. We can say, option one is one light, option two is two lights. We can do that.
Oh, we can do, since the one lamp is, you can add on the second one. You can say, hey, option one is provide a light, option two, you can go back and register for the other light.
Absolutely.
I just had you.
It could also, it could also come out before we put out.
Absolutely.
Like, before we put out.
Absolutely.
We can look it over.
So, we could check out the specs a little bit more carefully?
Yeah, like, if we all decide, like, hey, we'd like to go out for the best.
Can we do that, and then in the meantime, get the price on one of the pier? I'm just curious, because maybe you want to add that, I don't know, I just be curious to see.
I don't get it.
I would always be hesitant to lock in the people bidding on a product.
Right.
Like, saying, we want this one bid, because you're in their advantage to do it. And they may have access.
The only challenge is, if you don't do that, then you're gonna not have apples to apples. You're gonna, so somebody might bid this one, and they're not gonna all come back with apples to apples.
I know, and we could cite that as a grade level, or find out why we like that one, if it's rated for blank, it has blank warranty. Just figure out, and put those in the RFP, so that we can try and get apples to apples from them. And somebody could, I was looking at a company that works only in Sternberg, so they have a massive discount with that. Or you can find somebody who happens to have leftover stock of the one. So, it all depends on.
We met with a large lighting company who did our stuff on Chesapeake.
So, I remember when they were talking about.
Right, so he's the one that gave us some rough numbers. He knows this is going up, because I feel very comfortable that the numbers are gonna be pretty good. But, so, what I'll do is, I will, so, let's make, I need a motion to move forward with an RFP.
I do.
Well, I, I know, but we wanted, like, just move forward with an RFP, but then, it's like, then we still have to talk about what we're gonna do in the RFP.
So, give me another motion, what exactly you want me to, what we're gonna vote on.
Go ahead, Mickey.
I would like to make a motion that we start running an RFP for, let's say, for street lights one, Bay Avenue. I would like to get prices on the simple heads. Double heads for all, or just a cost to add a double head to specific lights. And honestly, I would like it to be, we give them that brand, say, if we're looking at this brand, we're looking at the piece of quality.
All right.
Review.
All right. Anything else?
That's all that I can think of for my motion.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Any discussion?
Well, I would just add the piece that we'd like to review it before it goes out, right?
Yeah, and that would be more.
And I'd like to see the costs on, the ones on the pier.
I know, basically, I don't know, it was a cost, I'm just, you know, these things.
Well, no, hers is about the light bulb, and that's about our meeting on next Thursday. Because we have BG&E coming in next Thursday. But go ahead. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? We have, all in favor? Oh, go back.
It's gonna be for just the A, not B.
No, the both.
I was going with the 22A.
Okay, yeah, I don't need any of the 22A.
Again, I understand the 25, I know how 22B would work. But for our purposes, I feel one two A would be a better.
All right, so, the motion on the table that's been drafted, and second, RFP reviewed by council, 22A replaced, Long Bay, single head, double head, brand equally, equal quality, also, just some, not involved, but some cost of the pier, the lights on the pier. That's not, that's not, that's not part of the RFP.
Right, all right, that's part of discussion.
Part of discussion. All right. All in favor? All right, and against, so move. All right, let me move this off the table. Thank you. All right, so, the second part is a project along Fifth between Chesapeake and Bay. And Mr. Russo's here, Dan's here, from the engineering company. Really, what my goal was tonight, everyone, is to make sure that we're all on the same page and understand what's going in front of the plan, and what's going on on Bay Avenue. What we've learned is that rumors can take, take hold of everything in a small town. So, what I want to do today, tonight, was bring us all to the table in public eye and discuss this project. Any questions y'all might have, we can direct to Rick and to Paul, Town Engineer, but also, these guys. We're gonna then take those questions, put them into a letter, whatever we need to make sure we submit them to Mr. Russo, just so we know that all of your voices are heard. So, having said that, won't we allow Mr. Russo to start off? We'd like to say something about the project. I know you've talked many times about it, but if you'd like to address anything, or do you want us to get right into this?
Well, it's been a while since we presented it to you. Maybe just a five minute refreshment would be an order, and you might want.
Absolutely, that'd be great.
I went downstairs and looked at people through the, you know, that make the chat out.
What's that?
Yeah. I checked out from banners.
Maybe not. Nope. All right, well, I'm not sure where I went.
Can I take a use for somebody to do this for someone else?
The project that we are proposing for Bay Avenue, which is the, now the temporary town engine facility, is a two-phase project consisting of a two-story building on the corner of Fifth and just a bit on Bay Avenue, which we call the shops. The shops have been completely designed within the bidding plan. And I'll just give you a summary of what some of the ingredients are. It's a 20,000 square foot building, just a little over 20,000 square feet. Again, it's only two-storied. It's framed and structured, and it's on wooden platforms. It has 12,800 square feet on the first floor, which is meant to be mostly retail-oriented facility, probably a small food court. And the second floor is meant to be about 7,500 square feet of office spaces, all on the, out of ring of the building, because the center is an atrium that's open from the first floor all the way to the ceiling. And you'll see that on the first floor plan. That's the first phase of this project. The other phase is a 68-room hotel, non-flag type facility with a restaurant. We cut back dramatically from the first design we had, which we put out for bid in a costless phenomenon. So, it is a still a four-story structure, 68, 68 rooms, one restaurant, lounge, and a workout facility, and a small recreational area such as a pool in the back of the building. We will satisfy all of our own pocket. How will we do that? Let's use that.
I'd like if you could just interrupt for a minute.
Please.
So, the first phase, what we're looking at is from where to where?
It's from, the dock, excuse me, hold on a second, Dan. I think I answered the question on this. Oh, there you go.
You see the two spires? The second spire is on the hotel. The shops only have one spire.
That's the first phase.
That's the first phase, and the parking, and then that's the total project.
The light, right?
It's exactly.
Right, I understand it. But how far does the first phase go, from where to where?
It goes from Fifth Street intersection of Fifth and Bay to this point right here.
So, it includes a part of that?
Almost the four sides of this.
I would say, to visualize it, probably a little bit further than the, what's that business we have up there?
Mix.
Mix, right.
The counter to the edge of the pavilion, if you, this is an ornamented pavilion, if you look across the street.
Again, this is, this will be entire, this will be the entire first phase, and as suggested by the town engineer, there will be overflow parking to accommodate the shops by, we will be paving a portion of this area as well. Now, as I indicated earlier, we will satisfy all of our own parking on site. How do we plan to do that? Because obviously, the parking for the hotel has got to be satisfied as well. Our thought is, and we have a conceptual drawing for this, is to put a small parking garage in this area. When we get to that point, and probably two or three levels at the very most, but it will be to accommodate the balance of the parking requirements for the hotel. That's what we intend to, we intend to satisfy the parking requirements.
Is that what the motel was, right now?
Yes.
What else can I say?
Here's the first floor plan. And again, as I indicated, it has 12,000, a little over 12,800 square feet of usable space. And it includes a restaurant in the front, 1500 square foot restaurant, and two larger bays that can be subdivided depending upon the kind of business we have. And also, small chaos in the center, possibly a full food court. It has its own restaurant facilities on the first floor. It has double stairwells, and it has its own elevator that takes you to the second floor.
This is in different orientations. This is Fifth Street, and this is Bay, so it's current, I mean, if you want to do so.
Mark, what did you say about that, the front, sort of roundish area you said is a restaurant?
That's part of the restaurant. That's part of 1500 square foot restaurant. Any further questions, that is, the question of the second floor?
I'm just curious, is there any outdoor area in that restaurant?
Yes, it's, all of this has been created as deck space for the restaurant specifically, exclusively.
Why cover decked?
Yeah, I don't recall. It's probably, it's fairly good size. It probably will accommodate about 25, 35 seats, because three is fine.
What's the elevation of that, the first, about first floor?
Seven, seven point?
Seven point.
Seven point, same, the same as the Baywalk, essentially, Baywalk.
And that's up to the flood requirement.
Actually, above the flood requirement.
I, I felt a little bit uneasy about the requirement of satisfying, the flood requirements at 7.7, right?
So, the flood elevation's five, the two feet above that, where your first floor, we said it, 7.8 is for that extra little one.
I remember when Baywalk, during, I forget her name, Isabel, came along, came to town, there was water lapping against the bottom of that floor, so I figured we didn't want to go any lower than that, so that's why we're maintaining the same elevation. Second floor, as I indicated, is an open atrium. This is a car around the atrium. This is all open to truss-type ceiling, exposed wood trusses, and offices on the perimeter of the building. That was, and believe me, there is a demand for offices in town. We filled up our office building, we did lose a real estate company that moved up to, of course, Street from Snee's, but we have small businesses that moved back into it. So, our office building is doing really well. I'm sure this will look even better because it has water access, water views. Any questions, I handed it.
What is along Chesapeake Avenue?
Here?
Chesapeake, not there.
Oh, here. Oh, I'm sorry, this is.
So, this, at the, this side of the building, this is the parking area, and this is Chesapeake Avenue, so we just go out parking on that floor.
What's your timeline on the hotel, like?
I like to get phase one built first.
Well, part of my question is, just thinking about, I mean, do you have a rendering of just the shops? There is one, right? Oh, yeah, okay, we can look at these here. Just because, hopefully, it looks, I know, you're sort of designing it, it looks like if the two pieces. It looks like if the two pieces were together with the towers, but we don't know how long it's going to take for Phase Two. So we want a building that's there that's going to look complete even without the hotel.
Well, what we did do is we made some, we made some temporarily improvements on this side of the building, which is going to be closed off when it, when it's affixed to the hotel, by putting a neustration in it and something that, so it doesn't look like a half-completed building just on the outside. So we did make some adjustments that we would eliminate when we build the hotel in time. That's a good point.
How close is the building on Fifth Street to the sidewalk, or existing sidewalk? And do y'all plan on doing, like, adjusting that sidewalk any, making it more of a, make it look better? Or is it gonna, how far is it to the sidewalk? How close is it?
The, the whole Fifth Street elevation has covered porch.
How close is that to the sidewalk?
Yeah, I think that's to that. From the back of the sidewalk to the, to the face of the outer porch is five feet landscape. And then the, the covered porch is roughly about eight feet. The building, part of surface building is 13 feet from the back end of the sidewalk, five foot of landscaping. The only nuance to that is in this area, in order to accommodate handicap access, we have to create a, basically a long ramp. And part of that, part of that issue is because of the flood elevation, we've got quite a bit to go up. So we, we need to run that ramp, you know, from this point to here. We have green space around there in front of the covered porch. And that actually will tie into what happens the same way across the front of the future Phase Two.
There is a secondary ramp that you can see here, but that's temporary. That'll go away when we build the hotel here. And that secondary access point will be moved and put on the outside of the building.
So right now, I'm from a planning commission, that is just the shops. It's not the hotels and shops. So your goal is to start the hotel once this is built or fully rented out? That's a big difference.
Depends on, there's a lot, a lot of conditions.
Right, no, I'm just saying, a, a goal.
I'd like to build it tomorrow, but we want to get this going.
So rented out, alright.
But I, my objective is to get this whole project complete in a relative sheltered time.
I have a question. If someone wanted to put a larger restaurant in, is that something that would be more to look at?
Yeah.
Well, the only reason I ask is because 1500 square feet is roughly the size of your average subway, sub shop. It's around, right between 1300 and 1800. So if someone came in and wanted to do a larger restaurant, would that be something you'd be more to look at?
I, I wouldn't say our, our eyes would be absolutely closed to it, but we have considered the parking requirements. And also, we do have a good deal of seating area outside, which would add to that 1500 square foot inside. First floor is worth that, that next case over, so there's a thousand square foot office space there. But, you know, potentially, I guess, could be accommodated.
If, if, yeah, if someone came in and wanted to use some of that, some more seating on the porch, expand more, is that something you'd be more to look at?
It would have to, it would have to work economically, and the building would have to work economically.
Just for like reference, and that's good with subway, like, open line, how big is, how big is the interior?
Open line, first floor.
The seating, just like the, not the kitchen, but the, well, I guess you.
You have to include the kitchen.
Yeah, so you're talking about the, yeah, square footage, just the whole thing.
Open line has 1700 square feet, but that has a second floor.
They're downstairs, it's probably about 800 or 900.
It's, yeah, plus, plus it there.
And, and your thing is the beach, how much?
Fifteen hundred.
The gravel lot next to Southland's is part of the larger portion, correct? It's not part of Southland's?
That's true.
Is, is this, this is going to be a pylon?
Wood pylon.
Wood pylon.
The original design we had for the larger facility was on, driven concrete pylon, so it was just.
What about the, the ramp? I'm just curious why you wouldn't have the whole thing in the back of the building?
Didn't work, we tried.
Really? Just not enough.
Well, I'm like, because of the height, we have certain regulations as to how cheap the slope can be. So, but my height has stretched it out.
It's gonna work.
How, how, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, the other point, we, we, the county mentioned there was going to be more people walking, more, uh, baby carers or handicap people that would, would come from this corner. And so by being able to do it this way, getting as close as possible to this one. But I haven't, go all the way there, so it's kind of a dual purpose.
So going back to what Mike asked, there's going to be five feet with landscape, not where the ramp is, but the other area. So here's the sidewalk, five feet of landscape, and then here's the building. But where the ramp is, how, what's the, what's the amount of space between the ramp and the sidewalk?
It's virtually right at the back of the sun.
With, with the elevation topo is going to be, what is going to be the screening around the building? Around the front where the deck is and all that? What are y'all looking to do there?
Do you?
Yes, sir.
That's all landscape.
So where the, from the bottom of the deck down, you won't, but we'll see underneath though?
No, it'll be flush, lush landscape.
I see, so no lattice?
Well, that lattice will be concealed, because we have to put our.
But you won't see it though, right?
And you won't see it. We have to put our grease pack, grease, grease trap back in there somehow.
Right.
And what's the setback on the, on the front, on the Bay Avenue side? What's the, because it likes, Baywalk, same time?
Oh, well, Baywalk, if you recall, that plan is just only a couple of feet. You, that's approximately what it is. We'll have a five-foot plan, a quick view.
Same on Chesapeake?
A little bit more space.
Same on Chesapeake?
I don't know, check that, Ben.
Uh, the, the distance between back of the walk and the parking lot is, I think it's four foot by code. So we're making code.
Then what about this corner?
This one?
No, other one. Yes.
It gets watered just because of the opti-shape or hexagonal or whatever the correct dog is.
And what kind of, I don't know, if you guys are this far into it, I'm just curious about the design. Like, what kind of materials are you siding it with?
Siding?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be hardy concrete.
It'd be hardy, not vinyl?
No, 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 no. Real vinyl.
And is there anything to break up the side of the building there on Chesapeake Avenue? That's, everybody talks about Bay Avenue being our main street, but really, our main street is Chesapeake Avenue, because that's how people come in and, and maybe to.
Yeah, basically what, what she's talking about is I think you addressed the one side, though, when people come down Chesapeake, they're going to see this.
Right.
That's, that's the temporary.
Yeah, that's toward south and then it takes itself.
To the hotel though.
Yeah, that's, that's the temporary.
So that's the side.
So where would that, where would that hotel go outside? Where would that hotel go?
Right against that side of the building.
All the way?
All the way, and then some.
But, no, Jane, I think you're talking about, when you're driving down Chesapeake Avenue, there's going to be a parking lot, you're going to see it back of the building.
Right.
Are you gonna, landscape, yeah.
If you're coming here, you're going to see this here, but you're also going to see this long wall.
Yeah, that's the long wall.
Right.
Once you clear the horseshoe.
Right, so you'll see the, what is the back of that?
It's, it's on here.
Is it right there? That's fine. So, so what I've had questions about was that wall right there. But what you're saying is, no, this one here. What you're saying is that, right. I understand. That's just right here, that's right here.
No, what that's, what you're looking at here is facing a parking lot, piece of gravel.
Yeah.
It's on that plan, it's out on that corner.
That'll go away.
This will be facing gravel parking lot.
Yeah, this is where the hotel's connecting to.
Right. I love that landscaping, so again, like, depending on how long, just before you build a hotel.
Right there.
What are you gonna do, like landscaping wise, on the side and, and the back?
Nobody be talking over there. If this town is going to be talking here.
But are you gonna do anything, just even maybe some shrubs or something? You know, just to make it, not look like a giant wall? And then on the back, like.
You mean the side here?
Well, that side, but also the back of the building, yeah.
It's right here.
He's something, Kyle. Yeah, exactly, just some kind of landscaping.
Yes, we can't, so that's.
It, just.
How temporary is temporary? How long is temporary?
What is the, how many parks, how many parking spaces are right there, in the parking lot there?
Directly nine?
Twenty-three or something like that. And that's what's designed for, to handle the flow of the Phase One?
Correct. With, with plan, like, this is a restaurant of roughly this size and these are office spaces?
Well, yeah, I mean, we try to balance it at the same time. You know, there's street parking and there's, you know, existing lot, that would be sensitive to that.
Because that horseshoe, the parking garage, that's going to be part of the hotel phase. That's what I'm happening.
Ron, this is a long-term question. Do you see being the owner, administrator, management of this building? For the long term, could you see at some point selling it off and then that entity having to manage the rent, the leasing and whatnot?
I don't, I don't envision selling it off, but I'm not part of my long-term plan.
I was asking that to, to make on my next question was.
It's kind of a tag to give.
Yeah, with the internal arrangement, having a bigger courtyard, you can have a whole ton of different options to do and modifications that are needed. Especially if you're a food court, depending on the vendors, they could need different things, different things added at different times. So I was thinking about the grease traps, the more food you get, you can answer, increase your bathroom count, and the internal modification. And the further down, if you have to modify, planning accordingly in the beginning of construction to make that easy to do. Like, being able to pilot makes it easy because you can get underneath. Increasing the grease trap could become difficult. And then if it's a shared grease trap between different entities within that building, because like, at my work, I'm in charge of making sure the grease trap is pumped out regularly to keep it all over.
How many grease traps do you have?
We have one, and it's a big one, it's like 2,000 gallons.
How many?
But it's, it's, yeah.
That's a new one there.
Well, and it, mine is old because it used to be a subject tank that I converted, so it's a cargo tank.
One plaque page, it's sort of good to do, is that we've actually modified the original design, and the grease traps will all be collected back in the corner.
Okay.
So that when the hotel comes in, there's obviously a kitchen in that, so that will, will all be ganged in one location. That can be screened in one location and pretty comfortably successful.
I know, and then at my work, when we did the renovation, we actually have a separate sanitary lines from our kitchen lines. So I know you have, like, I saw you have a planned manhole, and that's, so you'll run the separate lines to that manhole. But that would just tie into, if you change anything on the inside, like, say you have a pretzel shop, the ones coming in, like, you take that space and chop it up for a small pretzel shop. They're going to need a small amount of grease trap, they may not be working in a full one. So then they would have to tie in with the big one. So it's just, who's going to manage that aspect? It's not an answer right now, probably don't need it at all, but my brain is thinking that for, for solving later. And with grease traps, do you have any issue sinking them in the ground there to the water?
Yes, yes. I'm just afraid that thing is going to get caught in some sort of flood. And we talk about this endlessly. And what happens if the water pressure brings it up, it's tied to piling, then it could be catastrophic. We did pour one underground next to open line, that, that third restaurant.
What does it look like when it's above ground? It'd be, it'd be a box.
It, it looks like it's, it's like, the big guy, kind of brick box on two over the top.
And like, you could do it above ground, you just have to get like pumps and grinders and whatnot to do it. And then it's just, it's a headache, so it'd be done.
If you're pumping the ground, you strap them, you know, not too far.
So you guys are going to make a lot of the small ones inside anymore, right?
Unfortunately, yeah. No, uh, no floor grease trap.
What about the trash, like, where's, speaking of grease, where are they going to come in and pick up?
Yeah, it's game to that back corner, and I think that one of these, you were talking about, that your truck flows. Other things have come off Chesapeake Avenue.
My little trucks, the whole trucks.
I'm talking about like, where are the giant trash, just, you know, things going to go?
Screen trench area around, around here.
What is the roofing? Is it, is any of this metal roofing or is it all asphalt?
Metal roofing is that the.
For the porch?
This porch is in, and it's asphalt above.
Were there thoughts for skylights in the, um?
No skylights, never built another side.
Just, just, just maybe, maybe.
The one I built, and I built a number of them, all leaked.
I'm just curious, if you guys, like, if that much space would be even nice to.
Exactly, exactly. First, first one, we had about 15 to 20 of them, I have to know it.
I think we all have like hurricanes or at least.
The atrium above it, is, no, that would be close to. Just the updated plan, the final review with the staff. So this is where we gang all the grease traps and the trash enclosures, all there. When the hotel comes in, we'll, we'll marry this to whatever services they need. So it's one area that can be screened off as, you know, completely as possible.
So getting back to the, the parking garage, I would assume the requirement to build a hotel would be that, that parking garage has to be built?
They have a little before, y'all think they.
I mean, that's, I mean, there's no.
I don't think the plan went into the parking for the.
No, no, not this time, not this time. But when it does come up, hopefully sooner than later, if this does, you know, whatever happens, that parking garage has got to be a priority of, like, the hotel, of the parking garage.
That'll be considered along with the construction of the hotel.
Alright, whatever, I mean, I, what other questions you all have? I'm asking.
I have a lot of, you know, hurricanes on the brain, like, with windows and things like that, are you, you guys planning for, I mean, you kind of.
We'll build a house in the hurricane, in the hurricane.
The lizards? Hold it up.
Hurricane flower, and everything is, as best as possible, hurricane-proof. The windows are shadowproof, things could hit them, they don't break.
Are you doing any of that here?
Yeah, absolutely.
They are, okay, so you're doing the latest in terms of hurricane windows and.
Have you had any talks with PGE about power supplies, you're going to need a transformer set? And if you're going to do it, pick it up from power project, or do like, two transformers for one project?
Yeah, we're a little bit stalled right now, just waiting for comments to come in on, on the plan so that we can move some of that forward. But certainly we'll have that conversation. The whole goal of this is going to be to, to have, as best we can represent what Phase Two is, in that the best location and configuration.
Was there a thought that, again, future doesn't matter now for anything, generator? Doing a generator for either, for either phase?
I hadn't given much to that.
I, I was just thinking down the line, if I was building it, what would I try and take forward on if I need to put it in? Is there something?
Cross it out, see with the implications.
Yeah. Wow.
But.
It, it is.
In a hurricane season, hurricane time, who's going to be coming to it, I mean? Take a risk.
I don't know, I'd say that entrance is over, whatever, the else is above.
I have, so the downspouts themselves, obviously we're trying to continue to evolve into a green community. Will they be, what would the downspouts be tied into? Will they be tied into something, rain barrels? Will they be tied into the underground system? What will the downspouts be tied into?
There is, you know, there's existing storm grain in the back parking lot area, if you walk over there right now. So what we've done for this phase is gotten everything there by discharging the downspouts at grade and some minor grain to get it to the, to the surface trench string, and then brings it out into the system that's in Fifth Street. We've talked, we met with Paul and Donnie and Rick and had some of those conversations. We're, I think on the last interval, we addressed it as, as best we thought we could or should. And so we're waiting to finish the conversation, you know, once we get comments on, you know, I was interested that there will be some comments and then resolve it at that point.
According to the plans, your trench string then on the elevations actually goes negative from what it currently is.
It does what?
Goes negative. Because like, right now on the technical elevation, there's like three.
What's that do?
And then you go down. And then you go down, gradually digging out to get the trench drain to two point seven.
Yeah, so I don't know which plan you're...
It was in one of these guys.
This might be the older one.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not sure we'll do that, the version we have, but we will make sure we have positive planning, that's what we do.
Well, I was just thinking, more or less, I was just thinking like, with that area, you're actually gonna dig down to make the drain, where, so...
With, next time y'all go, like, when y'all do get in front of the planning commission, obviously this all gets vetted out. Obviously, what type of shops, what type of building, what type of units are very important due to order usage, everything. Because I know, I know you were saying how you might divide this, might divide that, all the building up top, but as y'all know, especially selling the conduit over here, things change every time. Your condos, your condos. So things change, I mean, a dentist is there now, and, you know, that was probably never even dreamt to have a dentist in there. But when you look at the restaurants, then when you look at the food court, you know, the use of the plumbing and the bathrooms with the, you know, I assume y'all are gonna have a tighter usage when you go in front of the planning commission. Other than say, oh, we can do this, we can do that. Because I was, I was expecting you would need a tighter number, because a food court is going to impact the use of the bathrooms versus just an open courtyard.
Well, I don't, I don't envision the food court being very large.
Right.
First of all, we don't want to compete with our other businesses in town that supply food, and we don't want to compete with the restaurant front. So I'm just thinking of a nominal type food court.
Nominal.
And everything, everything that we do envision, we will rough in for. So as to minimize the amount of improvement that needs to be done, both in the plumbing and electrical, play along.
How many vendors do you foresee in the food court?
I can't remember here. Retail, twenty-eight hundred square feet in the first floor. Restaurant, well, I said fifty hundred, forty hundred, thirty-five square feet. And if it's a market food vendor, I'm not, what do you call it, food vendor court, it's about twenty-five, maybe fifty. That's not all that long.
So the number would be, I don't know how, how large of an individual vendor would actually need if they were setting up, you know, stall plates or whatever, that would break down.
We will build in as much flexibility as we can because there's so many businesses, I want, I wanna put five of these kinds of shops in and want to build for commerce. We want what's ever gonna work, whatever, whatever the community wants.
Yeah, point to note, Mike's point, come forward, man, you gotta rub that stuff in.
You've talked about paving in this tunnel?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that it's pervious surface.
Well, no, there's pervious now, the whole parking lot isn't pervious.
I would consider it being pervious.
Yeah, part, part of the issue is that the groundwater table is so high already, so when you do pervious pavement, you're trying to obviously, people carry it down through the pavement and into the subgrade. In our case, the subgrades, the same water that is hidden in the...
Well, I mean, obviously then the, once it's paved, they gotta direct the water and it's swell, which they, they'll have in their plan, they'll have all that in the plan, they'll have all that.
Did you, you said that you updated this a little bit so that just the shops would look more complete until a hotel is done? Do we have a rendering of the, of the front?
You said that, you brought it on, right?
Yeah.
Front door is texted or whatever.
Towards, well, front.
There's bay, there's bay.
So that to me, that left side up top looks like half a building to me, that doesn't...
The right side?
The right side.
No, the left, the left side.
Looking at it, but the right from the building, so...
Yeah, 'cause that's looking, so that's the, that's, no, that's standing on Bay Avenue.
This is Bay Avenue looking.
Looking at the building, the hotel would be to the left. But we don't know when the hotel's gonna be built, so to me, it'll look sort of like the building just ends.
Changing that, what line would be hard?
I, I think, I think what it is looking like is if you go and stand in front of Baywalk and look at the end of this, it's kind of the same situation. You got the end of the Baywalk building and then you have the parking area to the left of it, so it don't look something...
Well, no windows inside, you know, south side of Baywalk, there are no windows, except the doors.
I think it's the balance of it, you've got the round, Baywalk, at least, it's the same on both sides. This, you've got the kind of round turret that, and then it just sort of ends, huh? The balance, the symmetry is missing.
The bouncing part, bouncing part though is that you've got Southland, so Southland is, is, the hotel part is, uh, uh, Southland is of a height that will match the hotel, will have...
Well, I know, I'm just trying to go off what we're, what we've been maybe looking at for a long time.
I mean, I don't think so.
I know, Ron, but we don't know for sure.
None of us know, but I don't, so I'm, I'm not gonna be playing with this thing for the next ten years, I wanna get it built, right quick.
I know, I just wanna make sure that this looks okay by itself, if it's, you know, sitting there for five years.
And I'm, to, to help you visualize, because I'm the same way, I'll, I try to find places that look the same as what's going on. And I think if you go out and stand in Bay Avenue in front of the ice cream shop that's further south on Baywalk and kind of get it, be on the boardwalk and look at that. That's the end of the building, the side of the building, which is what that is, and then an open space all the way out to Fifth Street.
It doesn't look ideal either, I believe, you know, it doesn't look ideal. I know what it looks like.
Would you rather have a blank wall like Baywalk now, take the windows off, you might?
No, 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 I think, I think that maybe, I just wish it was maybe, I don't know, I wish the end looked a little different. Or maybe if it's gonna be a couple of years, there needs to be some plants or trees or something that, something that...
Something's gotten up or something like that.
Something's gonna happen.
And those planes you mentioned, an inch and a half waterline, for the main feed will have to be enough if you're gonna have an increase in restaurant use? Or other things in there, orifice, pipe and flow?
Yeah, well, we, the architect and the kind of ones here will provide us a...
Freshwater after. Yeah, I just, it was like, if the flag is that big enough, I...
I wanna say that we already updated that, but I can't.
You guys mentioned earlier, obviously this is, you said paved, but you said you mentioned something else being paved. What was the something else being paved?
Paul had recommended, and so does, yeah, this back end right here leading over to where this entrance is here. Because this is gravel, because of how easily it gets hit in, and stuff. Because the deliveries will be coming in this way, they're gonna go ahead and take all the way to this end of there here.
Right.
So these guys right here.
The plan, the review takes from the beginning of the entrance into the site, all the way down and then all the way across. So this whole area would be a paved surface.
Not a natural, not a plant here, it hasn't. Because I saw that with that, like, when you strike the internal, you try to strike that to create ease, since it's paved, you use it sometimes to try to, because then you can control your flow a little bit.
And the green, the green is just like future?
A green's just the existing condition.
Physically green.
It may not look like that out there.
It's not quite that green, but...
We're just rashing around right now.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know.
The planning committee will show that the correct shade of brown.
How much green space is gonna be with this project?
With Phase One or Phase Two?
Well, both, Phase One to start with.
Yeah.
Is there any green space?
If we look at Phase One, any green space that is gonna be built. Yeah, and we, we have increased in, in the current plan. Yeah, basically, we're addressing the requirement from the code, which is the screening around the sides, the islands. Here, we'll take the heart comment about, there's a way to create some green space in here to help screen that. And then the hotel piece will end up with similar extension and green areas created. But, you know, we'll be a little bit more strategic when we really know how that Phase Two always fits in there.
What was the, I apologize, I wrote it down, I write like a chicken sometimes. The front on Bay Avenue, what is the setback on the front again? Because you have a porch on the front, because that's outdoor dining maybe, or outdoor...
Outdoor dining.
Outdoor dining, so what, where does the porch stop and the sidewalk start? How much room do we have in between that? Was that, was that, was that the three feet?
No, it's five foot from the back of the sidewalk to the face of the porch, and the face of buildings, number eight.
And that's on both sides?
And what's the height between the sidewalk and the porch?
Well, that's gotta be the...
About seven point eight, and then at this corner, it's gonna be similar to what Baywalk is, almost exactly the same.
Okay, so seven eight is real, so the difference in grade to the porch would not be seven feet eight, it would change.
Well, seven feet, you gotta keep in mind, you're not actually on seven feet here, the elevation there is already three feet, three foot still, so there's another four feet above that.
And you sit outside and you see the bay, there, you're not looking at the, the boardwalk.
Right, people are gonna be, people are gonna be walking by, you'll be looking over. It would be similar to sitting outside, still from the wine shop. And people walking by the side.
But you'd be probably on like tall tables or, or, I don't know, or maybe just a little, I'm just trying, you'd get some hot, more, a little bit more height, height than that, okay?
Well, it's gonna be real close.
Feel like question.
I don't think the elevation at Baywalk at the ground level is much...
I mean, it's not that high, I'm just thinking, can you see over the...
It's not much.
Can you get like an actual view of the bay, that height?
Well, it'd be a better view, we didn't have these buildings here, they're all over them.
Just took too long, Ron, we just built that, just took too long. The council should have built it back in the day.
You guys remember the, the, what was it called, the P I C, it was over there?
The New Oasis.
Oasis. Dr. Dave Lugi, I did it one time.
Great purpose.
I mean, nice to...
All right, what other questions y'all have, council-wise, what do y'all have?
Well, just, I would just, you know, like you guys to consider, and I appreciate you saying it, you know, the building's gonna end, have, you know, having some screening there with shrubs. I know at some point you're gonna build a hotel, maybe just across, you know, across in front of the parking lot, just having, so where the building ends, you know, sort of all the way across the front of Bay. So on Bay, on that corner where the building ends, or until the hotel is built, it'd be nice just to have, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have landscape right in front of the building, you know? And just to maybe to continue that across the front of the parking lot.
You're talking about here?
So it looks fit, huh?
You're talking about the long...
Yes, exactly.
You're, you're gonna be parking here.
Right.
And this is gonna be vendors, we're still gonna have vendors there in temporary spaces. So you don't wanna put, you don't wanna put...
I guess, yeah.
You don't wanna put the, the tanks behind them, because it doesn't go there.
What other question y'all have? Real quick, anybody? No, I don't. You got any, anybody have any questions? Any other questions, Rick, can you say?
The sidewalk where that faces the parking lot could be used, you know, you can just pour some extra concrete there, make it look like a, put some tables, chairs, just something that kind of breaks the sidewalk. Especially if there's shops inside or, you know, you have food court and other things, people wanna be outside. At least if it's a finished look, they come in, they easily get rid of when it's tied.
Only problem with that, because it can tell you all exposed, all the concrete, all the...
It's like cars up in the air, but...
That's not very comfortable.
Are you trying to get this in front of the public commission later this month?
Well, I don't...
That's, that's not gonna happen.
Pardon me?
That's not gonna happen. Because of the developer, because of the developer agreement, we have to have a public hearing at the planning board for the developer agreement itself, the ordinance. After that, then the council will have their public hearing on it, then we'll be ready to walk. So as soon as we can enter into the developer agreement, it's gonna be in December.
Now, real quick, the developer agreement, just...
Is this a development agreement, new thing?
Yeah, what, no, it's not, no, it's not new.
It's not new, it's just, it's the first one.
It's always been done, it should've been done, it should've been done fifteen years ago. It wasn't something we created. It was there, but nobody, it, it had never been followed.
In the zoning code?
Yes. So what I decided was, if it's in the zoning, we need to follow the damn thing. So that's why we're doing it. So it's not something new, I don't wanna, might walk away from it like we created this, it's just that we're following the zoning that was written.
Yeah, the zoning update, four years or whatever implemented, the issue was, nobody needed one, there wasn't anything that fitted, so the ordinance was never ready to walk. Code was written, but the ordinance has never had a public hearing, so they can't actually sign and drink and so they...
We're not allowed to sign it unless there's...
We're gonna try to do the same month, so...
So in theory, when you go potentially into December, you know, planning commission made it or January, it's like...
What other question y'all have, we don't need to keep everybody here, any other questions? And we'll keep, again, we will update everybody, you'll get the report every month at the council meeting next Thursday, everything Rick's talking about. Yeah, if there's any changes, I wrote down a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff recorded, we'll get an update to everybody. Rick is available, Paul's available, if you have any questions. I do have a list of, of stuff that we're gonna get to everybody. Also, the planning commission, everybody's allowed to attend the past planning commission meetings. So please, you know, this is a big project for the town for a couple of reasons. But more importantly, be involved, that's why we, we had these questions tonight, which I hope you asked all your questions.
Excellent. So, Mr. Russo, I believe you said that we're gonna be sixty-eight rooms for the hotel? Any...
Maybe, maybe slightly less, but...
Any car space, median space?
We went from sixty-five hundred down to fifty-eight hundred, fifty-eight.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, for example, you're gonna add like maybe one or two bar rooms, or three or four breakout rooms?
Exactly, please.
All right. Speaking his language, that's what he, that's what he does.
I have one request for something for y'all to talk about or whatever. You know, I think staff appropriately is, is, has been hesitant to release comments to us on the plan because this development agreement, you know, process needs to kick in, you know, at some point. If, kind of, what, whatever the correct method is to allow them to, you know, preliminarily draft comments.
Absolutely.
Allows us to work on the things that you're talking about and have a little bit more definition. It should all be codified by saying all subject to a final development agreement.
That's why tonight happened.
Okay.
That's why tonight happened.
I appreciate that.
I, you know, there's been, there's no been any internal delays, it's, we're just trying, you know, that's a big area. That's, that's the last of Mohican in our town.
It's all good, but Ron's gonna go in...
I know, he's gonna bug and crap onto you, and then you're gonna call him, and he's gonna call him, and he's gonna call me, so...
He's sitting here, probably, he's taking care of it, probably.
No, absolutely, but we do converse about it, and we do, I'll have any open questions that these guys think about tonight. Any questions that we've had, that, that we've talked between me, Donnie Bell and Rick and Paul, we'll give everything to you guys, so you can answer it and get back to the council.
I have a question.
Yes.
Paul, you feeling comfortable as you go on with this project, a little more comfortable?
Small project.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean make it any less important though, to get right.
High importance, high importance, but it will...
Intense, small and intense.
You know, there's a couple of things that we gained tonight that I appreciate, I, I like hardy plank, I mean, thank God, it's not, I know we keep talking about Baywalk, but it's not what we wanted to look like at all. So it's good to know that hardy plank, it's good to know that, you know, we're not gonna see lattice, we're not, you know what I mean? There's a lot of things that's good for us to hear, you know, so it's, that was good.
This is a hot surface moving.
Yeah, so...
The question aside on that, the lattice part is that, part of the other issue is it's in the flood plain, and we actually can't just block the...
Understand.
So, so the lattice actually helps to some extent to that.
Absolutely.
But we will keep the screening, the vegetation is screened, the, the screen...
Absolutely, we just don't need to see vinyl lattice.
Once, now you probably get this question, but once you actually break around, what do you, what's the estimated time?
I expect to put this up for bid for the pilings, and I wanna get those done next summer, put it up in spring and get it done during the summertime. And then I wanna go right, I have the cash to build this, so, so nothing holding me up except my confidence in that, that the market is gonna respond positively. We've got a tremendous marketing program to put together. My daughter's gonna be with me, and Anne Hooper, most of you have met, so we have a strong marketing team for this year. Overflow that we're gonna get from just the BPs, I think we're gonna have to beat people off, just to, just to keep our, our time, Rick, what do you think?
Hey, sounds good, Lynn, get it built. So, so, obviously, just, just over the same page, two phases. Phase one is the shops, phase two is the parking garage with the hotel attached. Not attached, but parking lot, parking garage is more of my concern than that hotel. Not attached, but parking lot, parking garage is more of my concern than the hotel. And think about what questions y'all have over the next couple of days, get them to me, let's get a formulated list. I have some questions from Paul, we'll get everything to Mr. Russo and to Dan, get all that back to everybody, yes, sir.
The question for Paul, can you send it forward?
Yeah, you can get those.
I'll get, I'll get them all to everybody.
Is this gonna be, there's a lot of questions and things answered tonight, are we gonna get, is that recording gonna be?
It's recorded, so we're gonna get it transcribed, it's an hour and something long, so it will be transcribed.
If we can get that, then we can just.
And you'll get the, you'll have the recording too, we can, so, but think about it, think about, you know, if you forgot anything. And then staff is working hard on their side, and there's still questions, we got a lot, you know, as we go through this process. But tonight was what I hope it would be, and that's to get your questions that you have as of today. Any other questions?
Well, also, what do you wanna run with construction too, in terms of the internal circulation and the guts of the building in terms of the users? So there's no reason why we can't continue this dialogue.
Absolutely, that's it, you know, nope. Any other questions? Mr. Jaworski from Chesapeake Beach, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Nope, all right.
Too many cautions.
No, he's living his own world over there, we'll leave that alone.
You didn't say something online about Chesapeake Beach, I did.
No, no.
No, sir.
All right, so, any other questions before I have a motion to adjourn? No, all right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, any discussion, all fair, so moved, thank you so much, everybody, thank you.